Good evening, everybody. I now call the school board meeting of March the 16th to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are here, including our student rep, Mr. Mia Kelly. At this time, I would like to take a moment to just recognize we have a couple of visitors joining us today. We have Delegate A.C. Cordoza here tonight with us. Good to see Delegate Cordoza. And we also have Dr. Denise Charbonne, who is the Department Chair for Hampton University Department of Education. Thank you all for joining us, and at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our student rep, Mr. Mia Kelly.
Thank you. We will now be led in our Pledge of Allegiance by Maria Babawi, a sixth grade student at Kilgore Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Maria. Thank you so much for coming as well. I understand you have something that you're going to be presenting to the board tonight?
Mm-hmm. I'm going to be presenting a poem. "You Will Never See Me Struggle, You Will Never See Me Fall," Joyce Alcantara. "You may see me struggle, but you won't see me fall. Regardless if I'm weak or not, I'm going to stand tall. Everyone says life is easy, but truly living is not. Times get hard, people struggle, and constantly get put on the spot. I'm going to wear the biggest smile, even though I want to cry. I'm going to fight to live, even though I'm destined to die, and even though it's hard, and I may, and I may struggle through it all, you may see me struggle, but you'll never see me fall."
Thank you so much. That was such a wonderful poem. I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. So, I understand you go to Kilgore, and they have a whole bunch of cool clubs there. Do you take part in any of them?
I take in knitting and crochet.
Okay. And what kind of things do you crochet there?
I made a, I don't do crocheting. I knit specifically, but I have knitted a scarf a few times.
That's wonderful. I know, I made a scarf one time. It wasn't really a scarf, but it was something. So, I see you have a couple guests with you. Would you mind introducing us to them?
That's my father. And my mother's over there, being as supportive a mother she is. And my two younger sisters, Joel and Janiree. They're twins, by the way. You may see that. And then there's my brother, also trying to be supportive over here, Joseph.
That's wonderful. Can we please give a hand for Maria? Thank you so much.
Thank you all for bringing her tonight and sharing her with us. At this time, I would just ask her family to stand, just to be recognized once again. And we also, we also have her principal here with us also, Lawrence. Thank you all so much. Excellent poem, and thank you for sharing that. Oftentimes, students think that the road to success is a straight line, but we have challenges, and that's exactly what that poem spoke to. So, thank you for sharing that with us. Any other comments? Anything from board members? Ms. Cherry?
No, I'd just like to say, when I went down to meet Maria, I said, "I understand you're an outstanding student." And before Mr. Lawrence could get out of his mouth, Mom said, "Yes, she is." So, you've got some wonderful support, Maria. And again, thank you for letting her come this evening and share with us.
All right. All right, so moving along to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Ms. Afanjah that we adopt tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for coming. All right. And so, at this time, we're going to move into our recognition portion. He can stay if he'd like. He can stay. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Gore.
Thank you, sir. He was so interested, but he was taping away down here. All right. Well, thank you again, Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Cherry, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, the members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Stephanie Jackson Afanjah to proceed to the microphone on the stage to assist with tonight's recognitions. All right, we ready? Okay. Recognizations is always my favorite part of the meeting because we get to recognize our outstanding students and our staff. And this evening, we have the honor of recognizing four student athletes from Thebes High School. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for, we've got two of the four here this evening. I'm going to ask for Jacob Castillo and Kumari Gray to please join me down front by the podium. All right. You don't have to talk, I promise. You feel tall because you're standing beside me. So, we have two gentlemen here this evening, but actually, there are four that we're recognizing because we had four students, which also included Jordan Bass and Billy Jones III, who are also from Thebes and part of this team. And these four student athletes are here tonight, well, two of the four are here tonight because they make up a team from Thebes High School Boys Four by Four Hundred Relay Team. And this relay team was pretty successful just recently, so much that they won the Virginia High School League, VHSL Class Three Indoor State Track and Field Four by Four Hundred Relay Championship. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, this team, along with other athletes from Thebes, participated in the state championship on the campus of Liberty University in Lynchburg, Virginia on February the 28th and March the 1st. The Four by Four Hundred event was the last event of the two-day state championship meet. And these young men, and Jordan Bass, like again, is not with us, but a junior at Thebes, Jacob is a senior, Kumari, a senior, and Billy is a senior, completed the race with a winning time of, y'all ready? Okay, think about this. They each run a whole lap around, right? Two laps each? And you did this time? Holy smokes, I was impressed with one lap each, okay. So, they did two laps each with a total time of three minutes and 30.89 seconds. I don't care what's chasing me. I can't run down the street that fast. Just give them a big round of applause. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Afanjah to recognize these young men.
All right. This is exciting. Gentlemen, would you please join me on the stage? You can stand right here. Thank you. Before I present each of you a certificate, let me share a bit more about this exceptional team. Even though Jordan cannot join us tonight, Jordan has two state championships as he has also led the Thebes football team to a state championship victory. He transitioned his football speed to track speed and has been an asset on the track. Next, we have Jacob, who ran the second leg of the relay. Jacob began running track at Thebes when he was in the eighth grade. He is called their secret weapon because without a moment's notice, he stepped in to run when teammate Kamon Driver twisted his ankle during the high jump competition. While running, Jacob stays shoulder to shoulder with his closest competition. And Kamon Driver is here with us tonight, although he couldn't participate in that race. We'd like to recognize him. Would you please stand? I'd also like to spotlight Kumari. Kumari has, also has two state championships as he has also led the Thebes football team to their recent state championship. During the state track meet, he received the baton and opened up a slight lead for his team. Kumari plans to attend Hampton University in the fall on a football scholarship. To complete the team, Billy, who is not able to join us tonight, ran the anchor leg. He is a leader on the team and serves as a co-captain of the team. He pushed the lead during the race and never looked back. Congratulations, gentlemen. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, please accept this certificate of recognition for this outstanding accomplishment. And the certificate reads, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Jacob Castillo, Thebes High School, Boys Four Times Four Hundred Team Relay, VHSL Class Three State Champions." "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Kumari Gray, Thebes High School, Boys Four Times Four Hundred Team Relay, VHSL Class Three State Champions." Let's give our Thebes state champs a big round of applause. I'm so excited. I have two student athletes of my own, so I know how it, the dedication and the commitment that it takes to not only focus on your academics, but also on your sports. So, congratulations to you both. Before you return to your seats, we would like to recognize the important guests in the audience tonight who are here supporting you. Would Shanita Jackson Davis please stand? Coach Jackson Davis is to be congratulated too, as she is the coach of this team. Great job to you and your team, Ms. Jackson Davis. If there are any family members or administrators, please stand and be recognized. We would like to thank you for your support of our Thebes student athletes. Thank you again for all of your support.
Yes, thank you. And especially, we have our academy, or not our academy, our executive principal, Mr. James Harris with us, as well as our athletic director, Mr. Ward. And I know that they give a lot of support to their student athletes at Thebes High School. So, thank you very much. And thank you all. You can look under your seat. I'm still stuck on that's two times around for each of you. All right. And Dr. Mason, that does conclude our recognitions for this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any comments from board members? Mr. Samuels?
So, you know I get tickled when we talk about track and field because, and I was once a track star in New York. And so, although they ran twice around the track, it's a 200-meter track, which is indoor. So, that's the reason why they ran twice around the track. If it was an outdoor track, it would have been a 400-meter track. So, I am doing the math. And so, pretty much, y'all ran an average of about 46 seconds around that track to make it, to make it that, that time. Fifty-one?
Mm-hmm.
And they are in high school. And we have college athletes who are running the 400 meters in 46, 46 seconds. You guys did a phenomenal job to be, to be 17, 18 years old, to be running 400 meters. That takes tremendous effort, tremendous effort. And I just want to applaud you, and I wish you had chosen Norfolk State over Hampton University. I'm just saying, so, but once again, congratulations.
Turn his mic off.
I wish you all well.
Mr. Samuels, we're going to turn your mic off the next time. Ms. Cherry?
Yes, thank you. I was so happy that Mr. Samuels explained that about the track because he, I know, because he was explaining it to me, and I said, "But still, it's like three minutes and some change." And he was like, "Yeah." And I was like, "It takes me more than three minutes to get out of the car." So, my hat's off to you. And he knows what he's talking about because he's being modest. But he's a renowned track star, not only in New York, but also in Jamaica. So, I appreciate you explaining that. And according to him, Norfolk State just didn't get there fast enough. That's what he said. Congratulations again.
Turn Ms. Cherry's mic off too. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment also?
Yes, sir.
Although it was a half a century ago, I ran track also for Indian River High School. And I ran the Four by Four Relay, which was a 400 yards relay. And I can, I can appreciate the kind of discipline you have to have to run that kind of distance. Although it's not been said, but I too had a pretty good time for running the Four by Four. My time was 52.
Oh.
Fifty-two.
Well, look at you. We need to applaud you.
Half a century ago.
I had something that I wanted to include. I don't run track, so this isn't a shameless plug for me to put in my time or anything like that. But I have a lot of admiration for people who run track because people who run voluntarily for fun, and then they do it every single day, that's a lot. So, I just want to remind you guys, when you go home and when you're hanging out with your family, remember to be proud of yourselves and applaud yourselves because there are people who go out there and they train every single day to be just like you. And I think that's something you should think about and pat yourself on the back for.
Other board members?
Okay, so now everybody's adding their little track claim of fame. So, I'm going to go ahead and then pipe in too. So, I'm also a track. I am alumni back in Texas. So, guys, I think we need to challenge Dr. Woodhouse and Mr. Samuels down there as well. And I bet you, we'll come up at top. Top three, don't you think? Me, you, you, and they'll be in the dust. No, but congratulations. It is hard work to be a track athlete. So, kudos to you guys. Very proud of you.
Well, since we're talking about those athletic pieces, while y'all are going to be challenging each other, in college, I twirled a tongue. So, I'll be there cheering you guys on.
Ms. Banks Gray, since we only have three, and it requires four to, you know, to run that race, we have to include Dr. Caggianno.
There we go. I'm all fours.
So, we're up to that challenge, Dr. Caggianno. We will train for approximately three to six months to get back.
I don't need that much.
Three to six months?
I'm ready tomorrow.
Anyone else? Any other comments from board members? I too would like to say congratulations to you all and all the best on all of your future endeavors and continue because it takes a lot of hard work to do what you've done, and you had to put in a lot of dedication, and that's what it takes in life, okay? And I'm sure in this process, you've fallen down several times, had to get back up, but look where it's got you. And so, definitely, congratulations. And Kumari, I look forward to welcoming you to our home by the sea. You made an excellent choice, the best choice, to join the Hampton University. All right?
Outstanding.
Let's give them another round of applause. Talking Norfolk State. All right. Moving along with our consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. It's been properly moved there second.
Second.
It's been moved there second, and we approve the consent agenda as is with item 3.01 Personnel Report, item 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of March the 2nd, 2021, and 3.03 Release From Compulsory Attendance/Religious Exemption. Is there any discussion?
2022. Yeah, that's a typo.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2022. I read it as I saw, 2022. My apologies. All right. All right, any discussion? Further discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we will have item number four, Hearing of Any Delegations of Presentation of Any Written Communications or Petition. I have two. And Ms. Bowles, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. And tonight's public comment period is our forum on our budget for the upcoming year. So, at this time, I will declare this forum open, and we'll move along with our first speaker tonight, which is Whitney Richards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Whitley Richards. I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm a mother of two children in the Hampton City School District. I'm a veteran spouse. My husband served in the United States Marines. He works now at the shipyard, and I'm also a real estate agent. But I come here today, before you guys, as a mother. There are issues in the Hampton City Schools that have to be addressed. And the budget, I see the budget. I agree, but I do think that a portion of the budget should be allocated towards training for the teachers, especially in the urban schools. And considering the fact that we've had this crazy pandemic, a lot has happened in a very short period of time, and our teachers lack the ability to respond properly. And so, we're seeing more and more issues, at least I am personally. I can only speak for me. I personally am seeing more issues with my children in the schools and being able to escalate those concerns. We're not able to go into the schools to speak directly with the teachers. It's just, it's putting additional strain where it can be avoided. And so, I noticed, as a real estate agent and doing my thing out here, I'm seeing the increase in the property taxes. I'm seeing the 61%. And I'm like, okay, I agree. I think that, you know, a portion of it obviously needs to go to the school, and I am for it. But I saw my tax assessment, and it came out to more than I believe my home could actually sell for. And that's mainly because of the school. There are so many people who love the houses in the area, but they're not willing to buy when they see that it is zoned for specific schools in Hampton. They're avoiding us. They're avoiding these schools. It is dealing with the safety and the communication from the schools to the parents. And so, I am here just to voice this and make sure that you guys are aware so that you know how to maybe take action or propose some ideas that can help us all as parents to feel safe and comfortable dropping our children off at school every day, knowing that whether they're wearing a mask or not, social distancing guidelines are still able to be followed, knowing that the teachers aren't overworked, knowing that the teachers are coming to school and they're starting their days fresh, they're able to get through the day without feeling that additional strain from the children and not knowing what to do about it. We don't have enough counselors in the schools. The engagement specialists are not fully aware of everything going on and all the different programs that are even going on inside of the school to be able to educate the parents about it anymore. We need help, and I would like to see the budget allocate some, a little bit of the funding for training for the teachers and just increasing some safety precautions. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. And that's Whitley. I think I said Whitney, so I do apologize.
Yes, Whitley Richards.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, we have Delegate A.C. Cordoza.
Good evening. I just wanted to introduce myself to the, first off, I'm A.C. Cordoza. I'm your delegate representing in the 91st. I just wanted to introduce myself and give you, if there's any information that you need from my office or anything I can help with, especially if there's a citizen constituent who asks a question that is not school board related and you need to refer it to my office, I would like you to please reach out to me, and I will personally, after the meeting, give each and every one of my number, my contact information, so you can pass it along to any concerned constituents. But yeah, I'm just here to be a resource for our school boards. And that's it, pretty much just wanted to introduce myself and say also, as a person who went to Norfolk State, bold, green, and gold. Thank you.
Delegate Cordoza, I don't know if we're going to invite you back. Great, there we go. There we go, redemption, redemption. No, thank you for joining us. It's definitely a pleasure having you here. All right. So, with no other speakers, I will now close this forum, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. At this time, Ms. Branch will come forward and provide members of the board with specific updates relative to the superintendent's recommended FY 2022-2023 budget. And the updates that she will provide are certainly, I'll give context. We received additional information from our city manager, and so, the updates at this particular point in time will focus on the information that we received from the city manager's office.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, school board members, and the Hampton community. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present an update to the fiscal year 2023 Superintendent's Recommended Budget to discuss some additional recommendations. So, let me set the scene because I do want to give a recap on the fiscal year 2023 budget. It still includes a 5% compensation increase for all teachers and staff, also additional support staff adjustments, and also teacher adjustments, and then also recommendations for new positions. So, what will be presented tonight is based on updates to our local contribution and then the recommended use or adjustments to the budget based on this additional information. So, as Dr. Smith mentioned, we did receive an update on the projected local contribution for next school year, and it is recommended that we include the following recommendations. One, a reduction of $408,000, and this is due to expenditure savings. An additional $137,000 for an additional 1.33 position. Also, $1.2 million for additional targeted support staff adjustments, particularly within our transportation department. And then also, an additional $4.4 million to support non-personnel costs and recruitment efforts. So, let me note that these recommendations, they are in addition to what was So let me note that these recommendations, they are in addition to what was presented on March second, and they do not replace what we've already recommended to the school board and to the public. So every recommendation that will be presented tonight, it does only impact our school operating fund, Fund Fifty, so we'll look at this local funds and how that is changed first. So as part of the presentation two weeks ago, one of our next steps was receiving the local contribution, and we have received that, and just as a, for context, we do receive sixty one point eight three percent of residential taxes, so that's personal property, personal real estate, and then also utility taxes. So part of our collaboration and continued communication with the city as we are developing the budget, the local contribution is estimated to be eighty five point five million dollars next school year. That is a difference of, or an increase of five point three million dollars. So as I move to the next slide, this provides a overview or illustration of what has changed from March second to tonight's presentation. So you'll see in the revenue sources that the only amount that has changed is the local contribution, so that is where that difference of five point three million dollars is calculated. And then you'll also see how that five point three million dollars is allocated across the seven different classification expenditures. So I'll go into detail over the next four slides to discuss the additional recommendations to the school board. So let's first look at those reductions. So I mentioned four hundred and eight thousand dollars of expenditure savings. So as part of our discussions with the city, they did inform us that the debt service payment for the Kickin's Hand High Science Wing, we originally estimated that to be one point two million dollars, but because they are experiencing favorable interest rates in the bond market, so that debt service payment will be eight hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. So that causes a savings to the school division of three hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. The remaining savings is related to the Virginia retirement system. So we have two different programs, one is the professional plan and one is the non-professional, and I've illustrated what the rates will be for next school year. But we are anticipating a decrease in the non-professional pension rates. So for example, currently, we pay, the employer pays over seven percent for all the employees who are in the non-professional plan, but based on the notice that we received from VRS, that percentage will decrease down to a little over five percent. So that is calculated to be about seventy five thousand dollars of savings to the school system. Now looking at additional position changes, we are recommending to increase the recommended positions by one point three three positions, and the costs include both the salaries and the benefits. The one change is adding an additional dean of students, that would bring our count from two that we originally recommended up to three now. And then also, we are recommending to fully fund the English Language Arts Teacher Specialist Position. We originally recommended to fund sixty seven percent of this position's salary and benefits within Fund Fifty, but with the additional funding from the local, from the city of Hampton, we are recommending to fund the remaining thirty three percent. So all that means is one hundred percent of that position is recommended for funding in Fund Fifty. And I've illustrated just a chart, just again, to show the comparison between what was presented on March second and what is being presented tonight as it relates to position changes. Continuing on, looking at the recommendations to invest in additional one point one million dollars in support salary adjustments, and again, specifically looking at our transportation department. So one thing that we do, we do monitor the other school divisions, we want to see what, you know, they're proposing, and we want to make sure we stay competitive. So as part of this additional funding from the city of Hampton, we are recommending to invest one point one million dollars for support salary adjustments for bus drivers, bus attendants, and other transportation positions, which are listed on the slide. One example, with this additional investment, our bus driver pay would start at twenty one dollars within Hampton City Schools, as an example. And then additionally, we are recommending to increase the instructional and coaching supplements. So we originally recommended to increase those amounts by twenty five percent back on March second, but we are coming back to say we can fund an additional twenty five percent. So all that means is we can restore one hundred percent of the cost that was reduced back during the recession as it relates to those coaching and instructional supplements. And I do want to note that on this slide, for not only the school board, but also for the community, we have updated our budget information link, which will go live, I believe, tomorrow, and the public will be able to see all of the recommendations from March second and what's presented tonight. So then moving to the last set of additional recommendations, we are recommending an additional four point four million dollars, and this is to help support, support a variety of different items. So one being the architect design for Bethel High School Science Wing, very similar to the work that we're doing with Kickin's Hand High currently. Also replacing school buses, approximately ten within this budget, increasing our recruitment bonus, and that is to help with our attracting exceptional staff within the school division. Also looking at increasing our fuel budget, everyone is experiencing the rise in fuel costs, so we want to make sure we account for that in the event that continues within next school year. Then also, we are recommending to utilize funds for a nutrient management service, and all this is, is a special service to fertilize athletic fields across the school division. The next recommendation is to share fifty percent of the ground maintenance contract costs, and that is simply the grass cutting and the mulching services to help keep our buildings outside looking great for the public and our students and staff. And then also sharing fifty percent of the costs that are related to a collaboration with the city of Hampton for the elementary aquatics program. So that concludes all the additional recommendations, so I wanted to also just provide the public with information on, you know, kind of where we are in the process and then what is next. So we are still awaiting the state budget, the final state budget, so there will be additional adjustments to this proposal, but as part of our strategy in developing a budget, and for example, with the five point three million dollars, that is additional revenue that's projected in local contribution, about three point one million dollars has been recommended tonight for one-time expenditures in nature. And all that means is, that provides us flexibility to when we do see whatever changes come out from what we have from the former governor's budget to what the final state budget will be, we can easily make some adjustments while maintaining our priorities around compensation and maximizing learning in Hampton. The school board will continue to deliberate this budget that's been presented, and then we are required to present or provide this budget to the city manager's office by April first by state code, so the school board is scheduled to vote on the budget next Wednesday, March twenty third. And then again, we will update this budget if we have any changes in state funding, so those changes will be presented and then brought back to the school board for further approval. So that does conclude tonight's update, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay. No, I don't have a question, just a comment. When you talked about the fifty percent that we will be paying to make sure we have outstanding school ground maintenance, I just think that's, that's so important, the curb appeal, because a lot of times, people make decisions based on what they see, and we've been very blessed in this division to, to look at that from a good perspective and make sure that we were on top of making sure that our schools looked good, not only inside, but outside as well, so thank you.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman Mason. I don't have a question, Ms. Branch, I just have a comment in reference to the, the supplement for our athletic staff, and that, you know, history, you know, in the past, we've had to reduce that budget, and I'm, I'm looking across, looking at Joe, and he knows how important it was to Dave Butch and Martha when Martha served as the chairwoman. That was one of her initiatives to ensure that we return those supplement back to our staff, and I am just so elated and excited that we are able to ensure that those supplements are returned to our athletic staff. Secondly, I just want to make a comment about the elementary aquatics support that we will be offering to the city of Hampton, and I think this is a very important program as it supports our kindergartners and children that are, that reside in elementary school to learn how to swim. We need to understand that we live in a community that is surrounded by water, and many, many of our children don't have access to pools and water, and so it will provide many of our children the opportunity to learn how to swim, which will provide some equity in this community. So I'm also excited about that partnership with the city of Hampton to have our children, elementary aid children, to learn how to swim, and that's where we start in elementary school, so thank you, Ms. Branch.
Any other comments from Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Ms. Branch, right?
Yes.
Okay, I was glad to see that we are funding the thirty three percent for the English arts teacher specialist, that's to the, from the Fund Fifty, correct?
Yes, this will be within Fund Fifty.
Okay, how, how were we able to come, to do that so, so rapidly?
That is due to, one, the local contribution change, and then also with the savings that we've adjusted for in this budget as well.
Good, I just wanted to make sure that everybody that was listening knew that.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Doc Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Branch, for that update, and this may be also a good time, I know we've had conversations, especially as it relates to looking at how we maximize teaching and learning in Hampton City Schools in particular, and one of those areas within the context of the budget, if you could provide just a reminder to the board, some of those expenses around how we focus on maximizing and training of our teachers that's within the budget as it relates to the curriculum and social emotional learning, and then our teacher induction program.
Yeah, so within the budget, we do budget funds for staff development across the entire division, and we actually have a department that is dedicated to staff development, it's called our organizational development department, and one, one thing that we do is part of the process of determining the needs for next school year, we actually have that department meet with the individual schools and the other departments to determine, you know, what are those needs going forward as it relates to training opportunities next school year. Those dollars are a part of our non-payroll budget, and we fully funded their requests in this twenty twenty three recommendation.
Well, there's our other questions from the board members, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to the second item, which is additional good news, and that is the focus on a retention bonus, and Ms. Ruth is going to come forward, our executive director for, thank you, Ms. Branch, our chief financial officer, she continues to do an outstanding job for us, and, and she's quite knowledgeable, so thank you for your leadership and for all of the individuals who continue to contribute to a strong, sustainable budget as we focus on the core business of teaching and learning, and, and so, so thank you. In addition to that, Ms. Branch then, I mean, Ms. Ruth is going to share with us, as the executive director of our human resources, a recommendation that we're going to bring to the board this evening regarding a retention bonus, and this is directly linked to and aligned with the strategic plan that the board reviewed and provided input and feedback. So, Ms. Branch, I mean, Ms. Ruth, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a new name tonight, right?
Yes, hopefully I can live up to her reputation.
You can.
Thank you, and good evening. I am excited to share with you details about the proposed retention bu- bonus. As Dr. Smith mentioned, one of our key goals in the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty six HCS strategic plan is to attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff. And one of the key initiatives within that goal is to maintain a competitive salary and benefits package to attract and retain exceptional employees. And, and if you drill down a little bit further, we specifically focus on, like I said, the, the compensation aspect, and as, you know, this goal centers around maintaining competitive salary, and as Ms. Branch has shared with you throughout the budget process, not just this evening, but since we first began meeting the first Wednesday in March, we are recommending a significant investment in our human resources with the FY twenty three budget, and in fact, of the new money that's allocated for the FY twenty three budget, almost forty percent of that new money will, that we are receiving is dedicated to compensation. You know, we have mentioned the across-the-board increases, market adjustments, a number of new positions that we'll be adding, and these recommendations are designed to both attract and retain staff. And what I'm going to share with you this evening is a proposal that focused specifically on the retention of existing staff. So utilizing unspent attrition and contingency funds from the FY twenty two budget, so this is not connected to the, the proposed FY twenty three budget, this is funds that are coming from our existing FY twenty two budget that are unspent as of today. We are recommending that all full and part-time employees who return for the twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, there's a lot of twos, school year, receive a one-time retention bonus, and it's important to note that the retention bonus is in addition to all of the other compensation initiatives. It's on top of the five percent across-the-board increase, it's on top of market adjustments for any employees receiving market adjustments. So just want to make sure that everyone understands this is not a replacement for any of those. So what you see in front of you, this chart illustrates the structure for the retention bonuses. The, the column in the left indicates different positions you're probably familiar with. In the past, when we have given bonuses to employees, it's always been an across-the-board, everybody gets the same amount. In this proposal, you will see that we are differentiating, and we do have a, a group that's getting a, a larger amount because those are some of our hard-to-fill positions. In that center column, what you see is the cost to Hampton City Schools per employee, and then in that, that far right column that's supposed to be kind of blue, not sure what color that actually is, that is the amount that employees will see in their bank accounts. So for our hard-to-fill positions, as you can see, it's employees who are on the teacher's scale, so teachers, librarians, counselors, school nurses, both RNs and LPNs, our occupational therapists and physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, school psychologists, school social workers, and a number of trades positions in both school operations and maintenance and transportation will all receive, from a take-home basis, a twelve hundred dollar retention bonus. All other full-time employees will receive a thousand dollars, and for our part-time employees, they will receive seven hundred and fifty, and again, that's the actual amount that they will see in, in their bank accounts. Also, during Mrs. Ms. Branch's most recent presentation this, this evening about the additions to the budget, she mentioned recruitment bonuses as one of the line items. I do want to note that we will be using the same dollar figures for those new retention bonuses that we'll be adding.
And I think, Ms. Ruth, you meant the, for the...
I meant for the recruitment bonuses, yeah.
I knew what you meant.
Yeah, too many twos, too many Rs, sorry. Yes, both the recruitment and the retention bonuses will follow that same structure. So our proposed timeline... So, our proposed timeline is that if, if the request is approved on Thursday, March thirtieth, employees who have not already submitted a resignation or retirement form will receive an electronic retention bonus acknowledgement letter. And employees who sign that letter are acknowledging or agreeing to remain with Hampton City Schools for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. And also acknowledge that if they do leave prior to the end of the next school year, that they will repay on a prorated basis the amount of the retention bonus. Now, if we have any folks who have already submitted a resignation or retirement form who decide, you know what, I think I'm going to stick around for another year, obviously, we will extend this offer to them as well. The due date or deadline for signing those forms is Friday, April twenty-second. And then, we will, will process all of those, and the retention bonuses will be issued on Thursday, May twenty-sixth. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Ruth. For, so for clarity, on the twenty-sixth, you will get a check for that amount. Not payout over the course of the school year, but on that particular day, you will get a check for either a thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and...
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred dollars.
On May twenty-sixth, yes, there will be a one-time payment. It will be a direct deposit payment. And yes, it will be a, a one-time, nice little chunk of change that we're adding to folks' accounts.
And this is being done like the weekend of the holiday, Memorial Day weekend?
Correct. From a timing perspective, we have another week here day on May twenty-seventh. So, employees have, and, and family, and family members have a nice four-day weekend for the Memorial Day holiday. And the bonus deposit will be made that Thursday prior.
So, there, and anyone heading to the auto banks?
Absolutely.
Will have twelve hundred dollars extra in their check.
Correct.
Or if they decide to stay in Hampton, they have that money.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
Other comments from board members? Ms. Banks Gray?
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Ruth. As you know, I, I am an advocate for our teachers and our staff. And I, I'm over the moon with excitement to see this program. It just amazes me, and Hampton City School never ceases, ceases to amaze me with the programs and innovations such as this to attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, to tie it to our strategic plan. It didn't get any better than that. So, I just want to tell you guys, job well done. I'm a hundred percent for this program, and I am just, I'm, I'm so excited to see it. Thank you for rolling it out.
Thank you.
Other comments, question from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I too want to give kudos to the staff for, once again, investing in human capital. It really shows that the, the focus is on teaching and learning in Hampton City Schools. And when you look at those hard-to-fill positions, I can't think of a better way to say, we care. I can't think of a better way to say, we appreciate, than to look at how you compensate people. And those positions are not easy to fill. You know, you've got plumbers, I mean, you cannot find them in terms of wanting to work in a school division. Good teachers are hard to find.
Yes.
So, I'm just elated that this administration led by Dr. Smith and your division leadership team and all the people who are around the table to say, this is what good management looks like. Because although we're, we're a school division, first and foremost, we're a business. And the first rule of business is to recognize and honor your employees. We all know, we can never pay teachers what they're worth. Not in Hampton City Schools, we can't. It's difficult to pay teachers in Hampton City Schools what they're worth when you are a division that's fully accredited. You are an urban division that's fully accredited. Your graduation rate outperforms the state. When it comes to classifying students into certain groups, your special education students, your African-American students, it doesn't matter. We outperform them in every area. And I think when you look at that and the hard work our teachers and administrators have put forth, they deserve every inch we can find for them in this budget. So, I do want to say how much I appreciate it as a board member. I also appreciate my fellow board members because at our retreat, retaining, attracting and retaining, that was the number-one priority of this board. So, you all heard the bell, and you know, I think it was Mark Twain who said, it's not what you don't know that gets you in trouble, it's what you think you know that just ain't so. So, I'm so glad that you listened to us and, and made sure that we put our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members' comments? Excellent presentation, Ms. Ruth.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That really concludes the superintendent and staff report. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, we will, as you know, for the information that Ms. Ruth just presented, we'll certainly bring that back to the board for consideration in terms of, as an item for, for action.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. Next is deliberation. We have item six point zero one, Superintendent Proposed Budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and six point zero two, student fees for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Any items for clarification or questions from board members? All right, we're, we're moving along to item number seven, Items for Action. We have seven point zero one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, school calendar, and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, planning calendar. Seven point zero two, revision of school board policy, GCBDA, sick leave. And seven point zero three, VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution, City of Hampton, Public Works, and Thomas Nelson Becoming Virginia Peninsula Community College. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Ms. Afanjah that we approved items for action as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right. Our next board meet, on the information, our next scheduled board meeting where we will vote on the budget is going to be March the twenty-third, right here at Jones Macmit Middle School. And then, we will have a work session which is scheduled on April the twentieth, and that's going to be at the Rupert Sargent Building on One Franklin Street. All right? So, items for information?
Mr. Chair? No additional information from the superintendent. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Woodhouse?
Oh, I was waiting for Dr. Smith. Well, I do, I do have something I would like to share. Thank you so much. For the board and, and for you, Mr. Chair, and for Dr. Smith, the New Horizon Culminary Arts Program under the leadership of Chef Carl Robbs have earned a spot as one of the top ten national finalists in the two thousand and twenty-two NASA Hunch Culminary Challenge, which is an outstanding achievement for them. And this will be headed, they will be heading to Houston, Texas, soon to complete for, compete for the national title. And if selected, their meal will be sent as a choice meal with the next set of astronauts going to the International Space Station. And so, this is the first time that New Horizon has represented our region and the only culminary team competing from Virginia. Okay. One of our own, Simone Wells, from Kickitane, is a member of that team. So, I want to give her a hand and give them all a hand tonight for their achievements.
Mm-hmm, that's awesome.
Did you join me if I give them a hand?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Anyone else? Other board members? Mr. Samuels?
Chairman Mason, as you all know, I'm a proud Spartan. And as you all know, we won the MEAC last week. And on tomorrow, we will be paying, playing Baylor in the NCAA tournament at two o'clock. And not only are we in an NCAA tournament, but also the Spartans, the women made it to the NIT, and they will be playing tomorrow. They will be playing Drexel tomorrow at six P.M. So, I am excited. And tomorrow, two o'clock, my phone will be off watching that game, so behold.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. I thought you were going to turn your mic off. But moving on, I do want to acknowledge the Zeta Omicron Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. They are celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary this coming weekend, and they are huge supporters of Hampton City Schools from school supply drives to a number of different things, and especially with scholarships for, for our young scholars moving on to college. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority will be having a historic marker ceremony for our hidden figures that's coming up on this, this coming Wednesday at eleven o'clock at the Virginia Air and Space Center. And then, kudos to our mayor, Donnie Tuck. Mayor Tuck was the host for this year's Mayor's Mask Ball for the UNCF Foundation. And we raised three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars for student scholarships. And those scholarships will also go towards supporting students within Hampton City Schools. So, kudos to Mayor Tuck for, for taking the lead on that this year. All right? That's all I have. If there's no other business before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.